Six P M and I call this meeting of the Miami Township Board of Trustees to order on Wednesday, August seventh, twenty twenty-four. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Culp.
Here.
Mr. Posey.
Here.
Chief Stegelmeyer, will you please proceed with the reading of casualties?
Good evening, Board. The following is the casualty report for the period of July the tenth through August the seventh of twenty twenty-four. Police Officer Matthew Bowen, Nevadaville Police Department, California, ended of watch July the eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Deputy Sheriff Fernando Esquada, the Harris County Sheriff's Office in Texas, ended of watch July the eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Corporal Robert Williams Sumner, from the Oklahoma Department of Corrections in Oklahoma, ended of watch July fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. And Corporal Mohammed Sayed, from the Melvindale Police Department, Michigan, ended of watch July twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. There are no special guests or presentations tonight, so we'll go on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? All right, I motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Snyder, you have Resolution sixty-three, twenty twenty-four, sixty-two, twenty twenty-four.
Good evening, Board. Resolution sixty-two, twenty twenty-four is a resolution to appoint Miami Crossing Joint Economic Development District Board Member. We do have one board member whose term is expiring and do need to replace them. I've recommended that we place Max McConnell, our senior planner, on that board at this time, so be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Chief Stegelmeyer, you have a liquor permit in Resolution sixty-three and sixty-four, twenty twenty-four.
Yes, Board. First, we'll start with the liquor permit. I received an application for a new liquor permit from K H P Dayton L L C, doing business as the K Pot Korean Barbecue and Hot Pot, located at twenty-one forty-eight Miami'sburg Centerville Road. They're asking for permission for a new permit for a C-one and a D-five liquor permit. The C-one is beer only in original sealed containers for on, for carryout. And the D-five is spirituous liquor for on-premise consumption only, beer in line and mixed beverages on the premises or off the premises in a sealed container until two thirty A M. We find no reason to contest this application request, and I'll be glad to answer any questions regarding the liquor permit. Moving forward, Resolution zero sixty-three is a resolution to approve the amendments to the appropriate funds for twenty twenty-four. Recently, the police department's been trying to upgrade some equipment that's getting close to the end of their term life. And there's three specific items, and for these items, we're asking for an appropriation for funds for Fund Two-Two-Five, which is our federal law enforcement forfeiture funds. I'd be glad to explain real briefly what these three items are going to entail that we would request the boards of permission to purchase, that we're going to be using these funds for. The first is to replace our outgoing tasers our officers carry while on duty. Our current tasers are very close to the end of their term life, and the company no longer supports the tasers that we carry. So any type of damage or any articles, cartridges we used during, for these items are no longer supported by the company. So part of the appropriation we use to purchase new tasers for the department. The second item we're looking for is to replace another item that's thirty-plus years old, and that's our beloved speed trailer. That's well-used and well-known throughout the township. The one that I inherited when we got here was, actually spoke to Lieutenant Ferris, was purchased before he was here. And as you know, he retired just last month with thirty-plus years of service. So we got good use out of the first speed trailer. The new speed trailer is updated. It not only is going to be able to measure speeds in the neighborhoods, but it's also going to be a message sign that we can use for messages that the road department might even be able to use in emergency situations. And the last item we're asking to do is we're updating, again, as you know, we have a very good drone unit here in the township. I'm very proud to announce that our police department does have drone operators in all three shifts, and we use our drones quite frequently. What I'm asking to do is upgrade one of our oldest drones to a more upper-of-the-line drone. The one we're replacing was an entry-level drone that we received when we first started. And what we're trying to accomplish with our drones is, as law enforcement excels itself into the next centuries, we're using drones more for a forward-type response, which allows the police officers to have a drone go into a hot call or a dangerous situation prior to officer's arrival and give us a bird's-eye view of what's going on before our officers deploy to the scene for officer safety and for tactical reasons, that they're able to stream the scene itself back to the officers for real-time surveillance-type usage. Those are what I'm asking for, the reappropriation of funds, and I'll be glad to answer any further questions regarding that resolution. All right, and Resolution sixty-four is I'm going to ask the board to allow the township administrators to enter agreement with the Dayton Christian Schools. We've been working with the Dayton Christian School to update our school resource officer agreement. And our present agreement expires in twenty-six, which would give us a couple of years, but we updated some things and wanted to put a new agreement in place prior to the school starting this year. I know that we're cutting it down real close to the wire, but it has taken this long to get the memorandum worked out and to get our, some of our officers trained in the S R O basic training that's allowed before I place them in the schools. This new agreement has gone through the legal counsel with no concerns. And it would allow this contract to start July first of twenty twenty-four. I'm sorry, I'm calling the contract, but it's an agreement. And it will expire in June thirtieth of twenty twenty-nine. I'll be glad to answer any questions regarding that.
All right, Mr. Schweigert, you have Resolution sixty-five, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, good evening, Board. Resolution sixty-five, twenty twenty-four is a resolution to purchase rock salt for this upcoming winter season from twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five. We were a part of the Southwest Ohio Purchasers for Government campaign, involved ninety-two local agencies, including Wright-Patt Air Force Base, and our bid came back very, came back exceptional. We, this year, it'd be sixty-four, sixty-five a ton. We're in comparison, last year, we were sixty-one, twenty-two a ton. So based on that, and if we have a decent winner, we would potentially save upwards of fifty-three thousand dollars. So we're thrilled with these numbers. Four bids came through, and Cargill Incorporated, who we have used previously, was the low bid for our department, for agencies. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but this is just a resolution to purchase rock salt.
Want to make sure I heard you that correctly. Last year's price was ninety-one dollars a ton?
Yes, last year, part of the contract, it was ninety-one, twenty-two. Based on inflation and the winter that we had, we didn't use a whole lot, the price drastically dropped. So we do have an option year. As part of this package, it was a two-year, two-year plan to exercise an option for the second year. So depending on how this winter goes, we would probably come back next year to exercise that second option.
Okay. Thank you.
So now we'll move on to public comments. This is the portion of the meeting where Miami Township residents are invited to share their thoughts with the board. Your comments are valued and will be taken into careful consideration. The board will not engage in dialogue at this time. Presentations are limited to five minutes each. Do we have any residents wishing to address the board?
My name is Niregintani. I live at eighty-five forty-seven White Cedar Drive. I also am your state senator. Just wanted to come by and address what occurred at your last meeting. As you know, the state of Ohio passed its capital budget. This time, as part of that, was something called the One-Time Strategic Community Investment Fund. Seven hundred million dollars of taxpayer dollars that were a surplus that many legislators, not me, wanted to give to special projects. I opposed that. As you know, you all submitted two projects to my office through Mr. Alex Carlson in February. I can tell you the specific date, actually. On, I'm sorry, on April eighth, you submitted these projects. Many started coming in in February. And I did not hear anything from any of you since then. You know, Mr. Culp, Mr. Morris, Mr. Posey, all of you have ways to get in touch with me, as does Mr. Snyder. You have my email. You have my cellphone number. You did not advocate for your projects at all. Typically, how this works, I've been doing this for ten years now. This is my fifth go-around. Typically, how it works is these projects are submitted to the legislative delegation, to each legislator, and then we get a call, we get a meeting request to go and tour these projects so that you advocate to us on why you should receive this funding. Now, at that time, what I would have told you, as I told many others, is that this time around, because I did not feel it was appropriate to spend seven hundred million dollars in taxpayer funding on these special projects. Usually, the pot is about a hundred and fifty million. This time, it was that hundred and fifty million plus the seven hundred million, so eight hundred and fifty million dollars. I did not feel that's an appropriate use of taxpayer dollars. I know you all here at the township like to tax and spend. That's not something that I like to do. I would have told you at that time that I opposed this funding. But I did not receive any calls or emails from you, right? You all passed a resolution without any knowledge, by the way. Not a single call, not a single email to me to say you were unhappy with my vote or my position. Never heard from you. You all did it in the dark of the night, right? You did it in a cowardly fashion, right? You could have called me. The professional thing to do would have been to call me and say, hey, we're unhappy with how you voted on this bill. We're unhappy with your position. We feel that we should have received due consideration for funding for these parks. And I would have explained at that time my position on the bill. And if you still disagreed with me at that time, I understand that. Calling for resignation because you disagree with me, that feels a little harsh to me, right? I've disagreed with many of the things you all do, right? Dayton Mall, still empty. Tara Data Building, still empty. I know that we've got a church coming into Sears. We lost the property tax money on that, right, because it's a nonprofit. I feel you all have failed on many accounts. I haven't called for your resignations. We disagree. That's okay. The professional thing to do is to talk to each other and to have a conversation, right? And so you all passed this resolution in the dark of the night, in a very cowardly fashion. But I just wanted to come here to let you know my position. I'm not for spending surplus dollars on your special park projects. I know you've passed many a park levy over the past few years. I'm sad Mr. Morris isn't here. He's been the leader on that, typically for parks right whereby he lives. A little corrupt, but it's a little disappointing, right? So typically, in a professional relationship, just so I can explain to you how one of those works, we call each other, right? We have, we all, three of you and me, Mr. Snyder and me, we've had a long relationship over the last decade. I think Mr. Posey, maybe six or seven years for us. But you could have called me, right? You could have advocated for your interests, right? But you didn't. You didn't. Instead, what you did was try to embarrass me, and you accomplished that. You got your names in the paper. I congratulate you for that. I know it doesn't happen often in a positive way. Usually, the news about your Board of Trustees is very negative. But you did it in a, you got some positive press. I congratulate you on that. And you put my name in the paper in a negative spotlight. And instead of advocating for your position, you chose to embarrass me. And, you know, that's great for you. And so I just wanted to come by to let you know that all three of you are an embarrassment. And that if you did your jobs, you would have called me to advocate for your positions. Instead, you chose to embarrass me. But look, my phone is always on, as you know, as you have always known, and at any time, feel free to ring it. Thank you very much.
I have a couple of questions for you if you're going to stay.
I thought township doesn't engage in dialogue, but sure, I happily answer your questions, Mr. Posey, since this is the first time I'm hearing of any concerns you have.
You acknowledged that your office received the submissions from the township in April, correct?
I just said that.
Okay. And did your office at all communicate that you were not intending to participate in this program?
That's not how it works. Listen, I've been doing this ten years.
Did we receive any communication from your office regarding those submissions?
Yep, yep, sure. Let me, let me tell you how it typically works, right?
Tell me what exactly happened, because if you're going to come in here and make statements, you're rewriting history at this point. You did not tell anyone beforehand. You voted for the authorizing legislation for this program. Don't pretend you didn't include that. The program that created the additional seven hundred and fifty million dollars?
Was part, yeah, sure.
You voted for it. And so when we submitted, you didn't say, just so you guys are aware, I'm not participating in this. You didn't say anything beforehand. The township expended money preparing plans so they would have an appropriate project to submit and go forward with as it pertains to the outlook and the work that we're doing here. So to say that we didn't communicate with you, you didn't communicate with us. That's what the resolution was about. That history can't be rewritten. I understand that things were very uncomfortable for you after your primary in March. But coming in and not participating and choosing not to participate and then casting backwards that this was a taxpayer-directed decision is not accurate, not true.
Well, listen, so just so we have it straight, right? So typically, how this works, like I said, is somebody submits a project, and then they call me or meet with me, right? We receive upwards of fifty to seventy-five projects, right? Now, if you had an expectation to say, hey, can you please update me on your position, I would have done that, right?
You know that happened from the township?
So you're, don't interrupt me. I didn't interrupt you. Don't interrupt me.
You're at my meeting.
Don't interrupt me. Do not interrupt me.
All right. Are we going, are you finished?
No, I'm not finished.
Okay.
I'm trying to answer the question. I'm trying to answer the question that you asked, Mr. Posey. Do you want me to answer the question?
I, you answered the question and you went on a diatribe. If anybody from your office responded to anybody from this township or any other local governmental agency indicating you would not be voting or pushing for these projects, I would love to hear details.
Did you ask me that question?
That was the second question that I asked as part of the first question. You do not respond to anybody regarding any of these projects, correct?
No, nobody emailed, so we receive the project submission.
And no further communication back, correct?
Okay. Can I answer the question? So I can't answer the question?
It's a yes or no answer?
It's not a yes or no answer, Mr. Posey.
All right.
It's not a yes or no answer.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for coming to present today.
Okay. Just so you know, that wasn't a question-answer session. That was you trying to make a point. Congratulations, Mr. Posey.
So we'll move on to consideration of vote of resolutions and motions. I motion to approve Resolution sixty-two, twenty twenty-four, a resolution to appoint Miami Crossing Joint Economic Development District Board Member. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
I motion to approve a liquor permit for K H P Dayton L L C at twenty-one forty-eight Miami'sburg Centerville Road, Miami'sburg, Ohio. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
I motion to approve Resolution sixty-three, twenty twenty-four, a resolution to approve amendments to the appropriation of funds for twenty twenty-four. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
I motion to approve Resolution sixty-four, twenty twenty-four, a resolution to authorize the township administrator to enter into an agreement with the Dayton Christian School to implement the school resource officer program. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
I motion to approve Resolution sixty-five, twenty twenty-four, a resolution to purchase rock salt for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five winter season. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Okay, we'll transition into the public hearing segment of the agenda. We have two public hearings tonight. We have zoning case one eighty-three eighty-six, Lions Business Park. I move that we open the public hearing for zoning case one eighty-three eighty-six. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Carlson, I understand that the applicant submitted a request for a continuation of the public hearing. Can you please provide additional information about the applicant's request?
Yes, Board. July tenth, Miami Township Zoning Commission heard a zoning case for DG Market, or is Lions Business Park first? I'm sorry. Is Lions Business Park the first case we had on the agenda?
Lions Business Park, right.
I apologize. So Lions Business Park, after that meeting, the zoning commission made several recommendations to the applicant. We, after the meeting, met with them. They wanted to prepare some comments for the board, saying that they agree with those comments and are able to meet all of those. However, they were not able to be here tonight. And as such, have requested continuation until the next regularly scheduled trustees' meeting, which is Tuesday, August twentieth, at six P M. So if the board is okay with that, we can open the zoning case and make a motion to continue to that meeting, is what we need to happen.
We'll do that. I move that we continue the public hearing for zoning case one eighty-three eighty-six until the regularly scheduled August twentieth, twenty twenty-four Board of Trustees meeting. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
So we'll move straight into the next zoning case, right? So zoning case four-ten-twelve, DG Market. I move that we open the public hearing for zoning case four-ten-twelve. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Carlson, I understand this applicant has also submitted a request for a continuation of the public hearing. Can you please provide additional information about the applicant's request?
Yes, thank you, Board. This case was also heard at the July tenth, twenty twenty-four zoning commission meeting. Similarly, several modifications were recommended by the zoning commission to the final development plan. These modifications to the plan are actually quite complex. And with that, the applicant was not able to get them to staff in time that we could adequately prepare comments for this hearing. So with that, they also have requested continuation until the next meeting, Tuesday, August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, at six P M. I believe, I forgot to mention, the last case, the applicant also submitted email requesting this continuation. I think you have provided, hopefully, with both of those. But again, staff will be working with them to review their updated plans ahead of that twentieth meeting and all be prepared for the public hearing. So please let me know if there's any questions. But otherwise, similarly, a motion to continue would move that to August twentieth.
No questions? I move that we continue the public hearing for zoning case four-ten-twelve until the regularly scheduled August twentieth, twenty twenty-four Board of Trustees meeting. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
It's time for the department head comments. Please, Chief Stegelmeyer.
I just have one this evening, Board. I'd like to take a moment to thank everybody that attended our National Night Out celebration last night. And I'd like to thank all the departments, other than the police department that helped out. Public Works and the Service Department made a great showing. The administrators showed up, and a lot of the administration did. It was a hot one. I'm not going to lie about that, but it was a good showing, and I appreciate everybody's support. And I want to thank the community for their support as well.
That's great. Public Works Director, John Schweigert.
I know it's a rare occasion, but I do not have any comments tonight.
Community Development Director, Alex Carlson.
Yes, good evening, Board. Just a couple of quick comments. A public comment was brought forward on the one-time fund from the State House. Just wanted to briefly comment, if you, if I could, about some of the background on the submittal from the community development side. Community development worked with the public works department. To prepare this application, submit it, while I'm not the township administrator or Board of Trustees, I do feel that attempts were made to reach out to Senator Ontani's office. I myself left multiple voicemails for his office, never received a call. I immediately then followed up by calling Senator Huffman's office just to see, hey, is there something that I can do better, something I've done wrong? You know, how can I better learn more about this program and be better prepared for this? Again, I received a great amount of support and guidance from a different state senator's office. With that, you'll see on the email record, I actually copied their office on my submitted response to Senator Ontani's office. I just wanted to be sure that it got into someone's hands. So again, I did receive some help and support from a different state senator's office after not being able to reach anybody leaving voicemails. Going back in time, I desperately wish I had an email that I could have sent, but again, voicemails were left. Senator Huffman's office was notified, you know, hey, you know, we just need some help here, and we did not receive that.
Alex, I just want to confirm something that I was engaging with Mr. Ontani on. At any point, did we receive any communication from his office that he would not be participating in this program before or after the submission?
The one comment I received was the one-word responsive received. That's all I got from Senator Ontani after we'd submitted the application packet, was just received. No additional comments or questions or guidance were provided. But again, no response to voicemails, but on a second ring at a different center, I immediately got pretty quality support. So just wanted to comment that. And then secondarily, another comment, there was some blame thrown, I think, again, very unfairly at the Board of Trustees and the township in general about both the Dayton Mall and the Tara Data Building. Without any context, those are both extremely complicated properties with a lot of, in the case of the Dayton Mall, court proceedings with the receivership, trying to untangle a very complicated web of debt with the Dayton Mall. Staff has been in extremely close communication with the receiver and the mall management and feel that we have a fantastic relationship and are still looking forward to the future of the Dayton Mall. So again, I want to rule that out entirely. Tara Data, on the other hand, is a case where a company left but had a long-term lease in place. So they were still paying the rent on the building, so at the time, it was sort of difficult to figure out how to get somebody in there. We've received interest and generally feel that that building will certainly be filled. It's a fantastic facility and a very successful development. So just wanted to comment on that as well. I felt that that was unfair comment received. And actually, would like to... And secondarily, just wanted to comment, you know, on a, on a very positive side. This is an activity that the Miami Township and Development Department engaged in in June, and then July was a little bit of data gathering, but we actually conducted a business walk in Austin Landing with the assistance of Montgomery County Economic Development Department and several other economic development professionals around the region came to volunteer and support. This is a concept, the business walk, that happens kind of all around Montgomery County. The Business First Program really spearheads this, but the objective is just to get out and just quickly do quick business retention, expansion visits, to try to talk to our businesses, see how they're doing, you know, what we can do as a community to help support them, and just learn more about, you know, their operations. So in one day, we were actually able to meet with sixty-three businesses. We sent mailers ahead of time encouraging management or ownership to be there. In most cases, that was the case, so we got to talk directly to responsible stakeholders. We got fantastic survey response. Almost, let's see, a hundred percent of respondents indicated they were happy to be located in Austin Landing, noting the property management team responds quickly and meaningfully to concerns brought by businesses. And additionally, a hundred percent of respondents rated public services provided by Miami Township as either good or excellent, with nearly two out of three respondents rating excellent. Following up on that meeting, several of the businesses have requested additional follow-ups for more in-depth guidance to think about grant funds or other ways that we can support their businesses. We have already followed up on many of those, and every single time, one thing that cannot be stressed enough is the quality of service provided by Miami Township and the Austin Landing Development. People really like to be here, and that business walk was a fantastic opportunity to engage with other economic development professionals and our businesses and show that we care about how they're doing and want to learn more. So that was my upswing into the positive there at the end, but again, wanted to share some of those developments going on. Thank you, Board.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments. I'd also like to point out that Representative Tom Young takes his job seriously, and he did respond to our request, and we did get funds from the State House side of that, approximately seven hundred million dollars. So because of Tom Young's efforts, we weren't completely shut out. And this money also, not only did he vote for the original plan to fund this seven hundred million dollars, but this money was already spent money. He's not saving any money. He's only transferring it to other communities. And lastly, I think we saw that he insults people in order to bully them. I've seen this behavior from him since almost the first day he became a state representative. He's treated volunteers this way. He's treated employees this way. He's treated fellow public officials this way. He's treated constituents this way. Over the years, I've received comments regarding him from across the district and across the state, and he's created a toxic atmosphere in Columbus. Columbus wants nothing to do with him. So he's created that atmosphere up there, and we pay the price for it down here, unfortunately. One thing can be certain, is he'll never hold elective office again, and we'll have a better relationship, hopefully, with the new state senator in the future. We'll move on to, yes, Clay, Clay, yep. Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't moving on. I was looking for Clay. Clay McCord, the finance director. I was looking at my notes.
I don't have anything to add tonight, sir.
Okay. Administrator Chris Snyder.
Thank you, Board. Good evening. Just to wrap up again on that, those points, I do feel very proud of our staff, again, for advocating for our community and trying to bring their tax dollars back into this community to improve the community and... And I certainly do not apologize for our efforts to try and improve our park system and again, to bring, bring those hard-earned dollars back into Miami Township. With that said, I also wanted to thank the residents in particular, and our police department, and Public Works, and the other department heads that were out last night, all of the staff. We had some of the administrative staff as well helping at Austin Landing. But in particular, I was able to go around to some of the block parties last night. Very much appreciate the efforts that those neighbors put on to bring their neighbors out, bring them together, and to interact with our police department. Was very positive comments last night from the community. I think everyone had a great time, despite the heat. There might have been some water balloons thrown, but I think everyone enjoyed that. So, but really appreciate the efforts that our residents put forth to put on the events within their, their blocks. So, and again, thank you, Chief, for all of the efforts of your staff last night and putting on a great event at Austin Landing. So with that, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Posey.
I think the topic has been addressed thoroughly. I just wanted to close with some of my comments on this. Mr. Morris said at the last meeting regarding Mr. Antani that he used to come to these. This was the first one that I have seen him at in the five years that I have been on the board. I appreciate him coming, and I appreciate him attempting to explain his thoughts on our resolution last month, but I don't think they're accurate or truthful. I think that a politician has an obligation to be accurate and truthful in his communication with constituents, and especially when it involves local governmental agencies that expend precious funds in order to comply with programs set up by the state